So calling the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the June 20th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting. I'm Deputy Mayor Debbie Burtland sitting in for Mayor Bassett who is out this week. Ellen Wonka, Mayor Bruce Bassett, Acting Mayor Debbie Burtland here, Councilmember Dan Gross, Councilmember Jeff Sanderson, Councilmember Wendy Wyker, Councilmember David Reasonhiner, Councilmember Benson Long.
Here.
Great, thank you. So our first item of business is to approve the agenda. Does anybody want to offer a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appalled? Okay, we have an agenda. Okay, as a first order of business, the City Council will now recess into the first executive session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1G for 15 minutes. The council is expected to take final action on this executive session during the regular meeting AB 5199. Okay, 15 minutes?
Let's come back out again and then go back.
Yes, we do.
Scores of drivers near Boneydon are ignoring or missing flashing red lights and stop.
The council are now going to recess for the second executive session to discuss legal counsel pending of potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1I for 30 minutes. The council is not expected to take final action following this executive session. Thank you.
So this is just notice to the public that we will be extending the second executive session for an addition of 15 minutes. Regular council session will start at 7:15. The second executive session is now adjourned. The council will take a break for four minutes. Make it six minutes, 7:20, and then we will begin the regular council session. So good evening and welcome to the June 20th, 2016 city council regular meeting. I'm Deputy Mayor Debbie Burton, sitting in for Mayor Bassett, who is out this week. So we've just concluded two executive sessions and our next item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak before the council on any item. So I think most of you know the usual. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. The detailed rules are on the back wall, and let's go.
Hello, tone acre 24274th Avenue, Southeast. I'm here in a different capacity tonight. I'm on the PTA Board and also the Executive Committee, Legislative Committee. So I'm here to talk about the TIP plan, and Bruce extended the public comments on some of that stuff. So I'm reading a letter on behalf of Cindy Getzmann, our PTA President for Northwood Elementary. Dear honorable—hey, I always gotta stop there.
Oh, thank you.
Dear honorable members of the City Council, the Northwood Elementary PTA Board of Directors would like to thank you for the work that has been done to ensure the safety of Northwood students, both with the installation of the 20 mile per hour speed limit signs on 42nd Street, and with the improvements at the intersection of 40th and 86th Avenue. We recognize and appreciate that special considerations were made to review the intersection and expedite a portion of the project to create a Westbound Turn Lane at 40th and 86th to make it safer for children to travel to and from Northwood from the north. And thank you, Councilmember Gross in particular. I know you had a lot of reservations about some of the changes there, so thank you. As the start of the school, new school year approaches, however, there are a couple other issues that Northwood PTA would like to have addressed for those students that are traveling from the south to get to Northwood. One, with the current layout, children would need to either cross 42nd Street at intersections without crosswalks or walk in safely along the drainage ditches on the south side of 42nd Street as they funnel through the appropriate protected crosswalks. Without changes to 42nd Street, many parents have stated that they will drive their children to school rather than risk this unsafe walking condition that also creates more traffic in the area. And the second point related to that is that not all of the high school students have a first period, so they would actually be driving to the school at the same time the elementary school kids are walking. And not that I don't trust our high schoolers, but they are sometimes less than seasoned drivers. So to address these concerns, Northwood PTA respectfully requests that the City Council design and implement improvements to the south side of 42nd Street, such as the creation of a sidewalk so that children can safely walk on the south side of 42nd Street between 86th Avenue and 92nd Avenue. We hope these changes can be made before the start of the school to ensure the safety of Northwood students as we encourage the habit of walking and biking to school. In addition, Northwood PTA asks that there be increased speed enforcement along 42nd Street and 88th Avenue during the first month of school as the whole neighborhood adjusts to the new reality of an elementary school with elementary age children walking and biking to school. Thank you very much, Cindy Getzmann, President of Northwood PTA. Switching hats, because I have 30 seconds left, just again, Benson, please push back on those growth management numbers. They're unintended consequences. I don't know if you saw the letter, but West Mercer Elementary is still going to have kids in portable. They have 60 students over capacity, so the 5th grade is going to be in there. So anything that we can do to reduce the growth management targets would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maude Lippert, 405294th Avenue, Southeast. I'm reading a letter on behalf of Sharon Smith. The letter was forwarded to me, and it will be published in the Mercer Island Reporter this Wednesday. It's a thoughtful letter, and it makes many points that are important for all Mercer Island citizens, and particularly for whom our City Council should consider. The letter is headed, "King Property: A Win-Wing For City Parks in MICA." Just when proponents of a private development in Mercer Park claim that no other land but parkland is available, the King property has come onto the market. The King property is approximately one acre, centrally located in the town center, just south of McDonald's, between QFC and the old Albertson's, now New Seasons property. A private development group, the Mercer Island Center for the Arts, MICA, has proposed building a $25 million performance building a $25 million performing arts complex in about one acre of the most environmentally sensitive portion of Mercerdale Park, where the steep slope of a hillside meets a natural redland. Some of the advantages of the King Property over Mercerdale Park. Number one, the King Property is closer to the businesses like restaurants that MICA claims its patrons will support. Mayor Bassett previously stated that a Mercerdale Park-MICA location is too far south to support town center businesses, and that MICA should be more centrally located. Two, the King Property is closer to the public transportation parking lot, making it easier for patrons to get to classes and programs. Three, on-location parking for MICA, which is not included in the proposed Mercerdale Park location, could be included in the King Property buildings design. Four, additional public parking could be provided in public-private partnership, such as what was proposed for the Heinz Building. Five, the MICA Cafe would be more easily accessible to island residents living north of the King Property. Six, the King Property is already built on, so it is not environmentally sensitive. Seven, Mercerdale Park would remain open and green for future generations. The City Council has claimed for years that it wants a central location in the town center as a public gathering place slash public plaza, but most of that attention has centered around the Walgreens property, where Walgreens has a long-term lease. Now may be the last opportunity to achieve that central meeting place, working with private development groups like MICA, to obtain and develop the King Property for an art center, public plaza, and public parking. Sharon Smith, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comments? If not, we will close public comment. So, the next item firmly on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. However, sitting in for the mayor today, I'm going to interrupt the normally scheduled program, because we have what for us is a very sad evening, but for somebody else might be a very happy evening. It is interim city manager Lancaster's last City Council session. So, on behalf of the council, on behalf of the mayor who is not here, we did want to present you with a small thank you. And I can only say that as one council member, it's pretty much impossible to describe what Steve has brought to the city in just a few months he's been here, from the wisdom and the experience, the professionalism, from the appropriately placed humor, which I think we all needed on occasion. Thank you so much for guiding us through these last few months, and I wish you well on your second round of retirement, and I hope you will come back on a condition and that we will be serving you well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if any of the council members wanted to say anything, or even staff. I know you've had your own, I think, farewell. Anything you could say publicly, I don't know.
Goodbye will be sufficient.
Goodbye. No, I echo everything that Debbie just said. It has been such a joy working with you for the past six months, and it really made this job a lot more productive and, I think, truly helped the dynamics of the council get through some very difficult times. But it's just, it's so great to see a professional of your caliber who is willing to come out of retirement and provide leadership and guidance to us. So, I thank you so much for everything you've done, and hope that our paths will cross again at some point.
Benson?
I can only continue to sing the praises. I just want to also thank you for your steady leadership. I mean, I think, you know, I think something that the staff probably welcomed, and certainly as a council member, I certainly welcomed it. And I appreciate learning a lot from you as far as how to conduct yourself and how to go about the city's business. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. With that, then, I think we'll move on to perhaps the -- I don't know what the right adjective is. We'll move on to normal business, anyway. So, having closed public comment, we'll now move on to the Consent Calendar, which contains payables and payroll reports, AB 5195 Island Crest Way Resurfacing Phase 2 Bid Award, and AB 5192 Caukens Land in Stormwater and Park Improvement Project Closeout. Is there a motion to not improve, but approve, the Consent Calendar?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes, and the Consent Calendar is approved. We will now move to regular business, and the first item is AB 5199 interim city manager appointment, and for that, we have Human Resources Director Chris Sebel.
So, following council's decision to reopen the recruitment process for our city manager, and the unfortunate ending of Steve's last day, June 30th, we're in need of another interim. And back in December, when Steve was interviewed, the city manager recruitment committee also interviewed Pam Bisnet, and she was a very strong candidate along with Steve. So, we reached out to Pam, who is available to begin July 1st in the interim role. She has, she brings to us over 30 years of experience in public administration and executive roles, primarily with Bellevue and King County, and she has since served in a handful of interim roles since her retirement in 2007 with the city of Bellevue, city of Kirkland, and Moracom. And she has agreed to serve in this role, beginning on July 31st through November 30th, where we cross fingers hope to have filled the permanent position by the end of her interim period, which is November 30th. And the employment agreement is attached for your consideration. So, thank you. Do council members have any questions for staff? All right. Well, thank you, Chris. So, then we'll just move on to the substance of the agenda bill. Any comments from council members?
I moved to authorize the mayor to sign the employment agreement with Pam Bisnet to serve as the Mercer Island interim city manager effective July 1st, 2016, in the form, in the amended form that we all copies of.
Do you want to go ahead and read that real quickly, just for the sake of the public?
The only change is in Section 3 Sub C, where the first sentence now reads, "In the event this agreement is terminated by the city for any reason prior to the earlier of November 30, 2016, or the date at which a new city manager is hired, the city agrees to pay the interim city manager a lump sum cash payment equal to two weeks' salary."
Good. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Motion passes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is AB 5193, the Automated School Bus Safety Camera System Ordinance and Intermodal Agreement, first reading. It's over to you.
Hi. Evening, council. I'm Dave Jokanen, your Police Operations Commander. I'll be presenting the agenda bill tonight, along with city attorney Christina Shug. And to start off with, I just want to show a video that does a really good job demonstrating what the system is about, how it works, and issues that it addresses.
It's from a recent news story.
I-verse near Burian are ignoring or missing flashing red lights and stop paddles on school buses, and we have the video.
Come home with a list of after reports on the problem and the price you'll pay if you get caught.
Pass a school bus illegally in the Highline School District, and you could face a $394 fine and picture proof of your violation.
They pass every day somewhere in Henninah District, multiple times usually.
Highline now has stop paddle cameras on 10 of its 112 buses, with hopes of preventing close calls like this one.
The last school year, I kept a very accurate count, and I had 80 people run my stop paddle and lights. When that paddle is out, they're capturing everything, the license plate, they make them all the car.
Last month, cameras captured 172 potential violations, and King County Sheriff's Department issued 23 citations.
You better let me over.
Bus driver Alicia Green says even with cameras, she still drives home a message to the kids.
You guys, even when you see my stop paddle out, you think?
The district's transportation director Devon Denny says distracted drivers make up a lot of the problem, but sometimes it's intentional.
Drivers will actually go by a stop paddle and wave to the drivers that go by them. We've seen other gestures.
Out of the fine, the company that gave the school the camera received $69. Courts get their cut, too. And after administrative costs, the district gets some cash from each fine for school safety measures. Before cameras, it was up to drivers to gather information on violators, to pass along to law enforcement.
We don't have time to do that. You're concerned about kids on the road.
Now the plan is violators get hit in the wallet, and they'll think next time before they come close to hitting a kid. In Burian, Alyssa Jaffe, Como News.
And the company that installs those cameras picks school buses on routes that are likely to see the most violation.
Okay. Early this year, in April, the school district, the city attorney, and the police department presented a briefing to the joint city council and school board meeting that we held here at City Hall, and we received feedback from the council, and majority of the council supported the system as we presented it. So, after we got that support, we sat down together and we outlined a plan for implementation of the system. Since that time, the school board has approved the use of the stop-arm cameras. They had a meeting where they did that. And then they also entered into a contractual agreement with American Traffic Solutions for the system. This summer, the school district will have the cameras installed on five buses. And then, as far as the city goes, we sat down and we drafted the ILA, and we also did the amended ordinance. So, tonight, we're presenting to you the amended ordinance that's MI-C code 1036110, which expressly allows for the enforcement of bus paddle violations through the use of school bus cameras. And then we'll also be presenting the interlocal agreement with the school district to provide law enforcement and court services for the enforcement and processing of infractions issued through the use of the cameras. The city will be reimbursed for administrative and operating costs for infraction enforcement per the RCW. A portion of the fine, it's a $394 fine, a portion of that goes to ATS for equipment and services of the system. The remaining amount of the fine goes to the school district. The violations are processed in the same manner as a parking infraction. It doesn't appear on your driver's record, doesn't get reported to you DOL. And according to American Traffic Solutions, 96% of the violators don't receive another citation, and 88% of them pay their fee. So, once the system is approved to go live, we plan on having a public information campaign this summer involving the school district, the city, and getting the word out as far as that, hey, this is coming, be on the lookout. We're planning on having the camera system activated for the beginning of the school year. And ready to take your questions.
Council, any questions? Benson?
Maybe just some additional information, I guess. I know that we talked at the joint school district and council meeting. Issue about grace period was discussed, and I just want to make sure maybe it's something we can just elaborate that.
Sure. When we talked at the joint meeting, both the school board and the city council indicated to me that they didn't want to go through with the grace period. So, what we're going to do is have the information campaign count as a grace period. So, we'll get the word out in the summertime, and then when the system goes live at the beginning of the school year, it will be issuing citations.
Do you have any idea why the, in that video we just saw, that of 170 violations, only 20 somewhere out were actually related in tickets?
I don't know for sure, but I talked to King County, and the information I got from King County is that they were still getting their system down as far as issuing the citations. So, it wasn't really clear to me in their explanation, but that was the information that I got.
And I'm not sure, this is really not your question so much, but maybe someone can answer. This interlocal agreement is, well, the way this thing is set up right now, the only one who's actually doing anything under the interlocal is the city. The school district doesn't have any obligations under the interlocal. So, it struck me as a little bit, and obviously, the school district gets the lion's share of the monies that come out of this. But it struck me as a little bit strange that the city is picking up an indemnification obligation in this scenario where, I understand it's a mutual indemnification, but effectively, it's a one-way indemnification, because the city's the only one required to do anything under this agreement. I mean, if the school district is getting the money, it would strike me that the school district should be getting, should be providing the indemnification, since all the city's doing is covering its costs.
I can speak to that, and Christina Shug, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. And yes, you are correct that we set it up as mutual indemnification, and you are also correct that the roles are different. The school district's role is probably more passive, and as where the city is doing the law enforcement and the court services, so yes, we have a stronger role. But we do think mutual indemnification is appropriate. It is what was negotiated with the school district. If council has a different opinion, we will certainly take it into account.
But it's, and I understand that's what it says, but was there any thought given to the fact that the school district's getting all the money and the city's got all the liability?
Well, it's mutually indemnified. If you look also, so it's a reciprocal agreement.
Right, but does the school district have any obligations under this agreement, other than, did they have any obligations under this agreement? Because I couldn't find it.
And as we said, this is the way it was negotiated. If the council would like a different direction, we can certainly entertain that.
The school is, you know, one of the things that the school does do, though, is they have been meeting along with us, with ATS, formulating this plan. They make the buses available. They have gone out, done their survey as far as which bus routes are problematic. They are with ATS and work with them, getting the cameras put onto the buses, monitoring the cameras, making sure that they're working, reporting back, and working with ATS to keep the system going. So, they are doing some work there.
Benson, do you have any more questions?
I have any questions, but just --
It's Susan Smith. Can you, do you want to go ahead and elaborate? Go ahead, councilmember one.
No, I was just gonna point out, Section 7 of this ILA basically puts under the, the school district has a burden to, enter into the contract with ATS, is that the word acronym? And to comply with that contract. So, there is some responsibility. I'm not bothered by the fact that, you know, that the school district is getting the most of many. I mean, the whole purpose of this is to give many in order to promote safety, to protect the kids. So, I'm not bothered by the fact that there seems to be a disparity between as far as what the city gets and what the school gets.
And follow-up to the questions raised by the councilmember Grass, I was just going to point out that in paragraph 6.2, there is a re-opener provision, and negotiations can be reopened, and it specifically calls out if costs need to be adjusted based on actual practice. So, that is something that can be exercised, but it is quite common in all of our agreements with the school district that the indemnification provision be mutual. That's our common practice. And I understand that the roles and responsibilities are different here, but that's by nature of the fact that the city has law enforcement officers, we have court services, the school district does not. And obviously, that's just the factual situation here. So, again, if the council wants to strike a different arrangement, I think we went into this knowing that it was going to be a little lopsided with the city doing more, just given the roles and responsibilities, the fact that we have law enforcement and we don't.
So I would presume this contract is modeled after the Highland one?
That's true. And also just, and it is also modeled, I mean, taken from the R C W that explicitly lays out the roles and how the revenue stream works and that the R C W is clear that all this money does go to the school district. It is for the benefit of the school district, for schools' own safety projects.
So I'm going to jump in. And part of it was, and of course because of the public comment, and then also the nature of the conversation with regard to tip a couple of weeks ago, and that is, it calls out, if I can find my place again, the remaining amount of the fine goes to the M I S D to fund schools' own safety projects as determined by I, M I S D. So what I'm thinking about is there was just a lot of conversation about the intersection 40th and 84th, 42nd, et cetera. I think I might have to be looking to the city manager and asking if there's a general understood set of principles or guidelines whereby the city and the school district together, we'd be looking at jointly prioritized projects, given that we also then have the engineering and the staff and responsibilities for street sidewalks, et cetera. So how do you see this working in terms of determining exactly how these funds would be allocated?
Well, as mentioned, the statute is very clear in that it's the determination of the school district, but similar to the cooperative arrangement that we have on a lot of other things, you know, for example, the T I P, that's the city's obligation. But we both solicit and take seriously the input of the district and, as you heard earlier tonight, the P T As and so forth, and how we prioritize those. So I would hope that the district would also take city input into account as they determine what the appropriate expenditure of those monies are, especially if they're items that do require public improvements within right-of-way, which of course, they would need our participation in.
Do you have any examples where these funds have been used in other districts? So Burien, other?
I don't have any examples yet. I mean, it's a very new program. I think the other two programs have been up and running just a little over a year or so, so it's really new.
And how many buses? Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, no, no. Finish your final question.
Is it a final question? How many buses? Will they initially be?
Five buses for the school district.
Five out of how many?
Three.
Well, we have 40 bus routes, so.
Okay.
Five out of 40.
Jeff?
Yeah, no, I just... My presumption, my desire is that the revenue, total revenue from this program is zero because nobody goes by a bus. And even if there's something, it doesn't seem like we're talking about a lot of money here. We talked about a public information campaign. Does that have a budget to it and who's spending? I mean, is that part of what the school district is going to fund? I mean, I think it's very worth getting the word out on this thing. And since they're getting most of it, then who's doing this public information campaign?
We're going to be meeting here later on this month and getting that together. I know that A T S has provided us with a bunch of materials, P S A information, materials to hand out, to post. We'll be working with Ross and the school district and the police department getting that message out there, so.
Any further questions?
Is there any signage on the buses? If we're going to have cameras on five, are we going to sort of remind people everywhere around buses that this is a safety issue or is that getting too into the weeds?
Hi, I'm David Byrne, Director of Transportation. So the question was, is there going to be signage on buses?
Slow down, stop for kids and $4 fines.
No, we can't, we're really by Washington, the State Patrol doesn't allow us to put any, anything like that on the actual bus itself. So we can put it at the school or in the transportation department on a fence or something like that, but we can't put it on a bus.
If you have other questions, I entertain a motion?
I move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances.
Is there a second? Sorry, thank you. All right, any questions coming in from council members?
I have a question, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes?
I move to adopt ordinance number 16C-10, amending M I C C 10.36.110 regarding overtaking and passing buses.
Second?
So, just proposed a couple amendments. One, I think staff was correct, I thought the staff was going to mention this amendment out there, but I assume on section 4.3, you're going to, do you want to delete the word "court" on the seventh line? Wasn't that your intention?
Excuse me, that's actually in the interlocal, which is the next.
Okay, we're just going to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, so we have a first and second then for the second motion on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it passes?
Christine, do you want to address the issue that Counsel Number Glass just raised?
Yes, and what the staff is recommending, what we're recommending is if you look on section 4.3, which is on page seven of the interlocal, we would like to, I guess it's about the fourth line from the bottom, we would like to strike the word "court" before "costs." It says, "Did not fully satisfy the court costs," we'd like to strike the word "court" just so it's more encompassing of law enforcement and court services, just for that clarification.
Do you have any motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
No motion. So, I move to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement in substantial form attached here to exhibit two.
Okay, there's a first and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, the motion was... Just to adopt, to authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement in substantial form attached to exhibit two.
And seconded by Wendy?
But with the modification that Christine just talked about?
That was, yeah, that was not in there. I forgot to add the words, it has amended. It has amended in section 4.3.
Because it says, it reads, authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement in substantial form attached to, to, as exhibit two. Do we need it to be fully amended? You can just say, "and as amended." "And as amended." Okay.
And I'm sorry, Carrie and Christine, I can't find the, that jumping out of me is a provision which has the balance of the money going to the school district for school safety stuff. Where is that?
I believe that's in the R C W. Christina, we're, we're allowed that it goes to school safety's own measures.
But that's also in the interlocal somewhere, isn't it?
There's exhibit A. It's attached, it has an allocation.
The other question I would, I'd like to request that the, an amendment be negotiated by the city manager to just have the school district notify us how they're expending the monies for school safety projects, just so we know where the money's going towards.
That sounds reasonable. I'm going to look to the city attorney, but it certainly needs to be formalized in any way, which is, I think it would be helpful to have a motion to amend, seconded vote on that, and then we can certainly add that.
Okay.
So my motion would be to direct the city manager to include an amendment to the agreement in which, in which the school district periodically reports to the city the school zone safety projects being paid for from revenues.
So let me make sure I'm tracking where we are. My understanding was we had a first and second on the motion, and now we're seeking to amend, to amend the motion that requires a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff, so now we're going to debate and discuss the amendment?
Yeah, no, that doesn't make it a amendment, it's just, we've been sitting here talking about wanting to have some coordination, and probably the best way to start to have coordination is just to know how the money's being expended.
Instead of, you mentioned periodically, that I would just certainly amend it.
I'll leave it up to the city manager to figure out.
Okay, great. Okay, so the amendment's been first and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes, and now we're on to the, I won't say the original motion, but we're on to the motion as amended in its amendment. So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. This is going forward quickly.
I just want to make it clear.
Yes, I got one first. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, the school district, for being here as well. We appreciate it. Okay, the next item of the business is regular business A B 5198, the first reading of the fireworks code amendments, and we're welcome to Fire Chief Steve Hyten.
Good evening, Counsel. For the record, Steve Hyten, Fire Chief. Been confronting tonight Agenda Bill 5198, which addresses adoption of ordinance number 16C-02, amending chapter 8.35 of the Mercer Island City Code regarding fireworks regulation. On April 4th, we brought forth an Agenda Bill, 5159, that proposed two items. The first was addressing whether or not the council still wanted the city to sell and discharge fireworks. And the second was recommending allowing the local fire official, myself, the fire chief, to sign permit applications for the sale of fireworks as long as the applicant had met all the requirements as per state law and Mercer Island City Code. During that meeting and the following discussion, more questions emerged, and so council requested that staff go and find more information and provide more input to answer some of those questions. We then discussed on June 11th at the mini-planning session, and it resulted in the following four questions, which were, should the city continue to allow the sale and discharge of fireworks? Should the city establish additional criteria for the approval of fireworks sales permit applications? Should the fire chief have the authority to ban the discharge of fireworks in the given year due to increased fire danger? And should the council delegate its authority to issue fireworks sales permits to the fire chief? Through that discussion, we gathered that information, put together, and with counsel's input, make the following recommendations. Counsel, based upon the citizen survey and that discussion, put forth that they would like to still see the city involved in the sale and discharge of fireworks and keep that approval. As far as establishing additional criteria for the sale of fireworks permits, the hours were recommended to be changed. On June 28th, the hours of sale would be from noon to 9:00 P. M. June 29th through July 4th, 9:00 A. M. to 9:00 P. M. Ban of the sale of fireworks on July 5th, and a ban on the sale of fireworks December 27th through 31st. Let's see, the third question, should the fire chief have the authority to ban the discharge of fireworks in the given year due to increased fire danger? Again, through that discussion, staff recommends that, yes, the fire chief should have the authority with council's approval to ban the discharge of fireworks due to that increased fire danger, especially if we see, say, another drought year like last year. And on the final one, should the council delegate its authority to issue fireworks sales permits to the fire chief? Again, council showed favorable discussion on that, and so staff recommends that council make that change as per R C W 70.77.111. So, in summary, for those proposed changes to 8.35, council, we recommend that council imposes new restrictions upon the sale of consumer fireworks within the city, change the designated authority for approval or denial of the permit application as long as the applicant meets all the requirements as per the state law and the city code, change the days and times fireworks sales are allowed and authorized, fire chief to impose a ban on the discharge of fireworks due to extreme fire danger. The proposed changes do not alter the permit approval process for public displays, as state law requires that the governing body of the city grant or deny an application for a public display permit. So that one I'll still be bringing to you for summer celebration. Recommendation of the staff would be to suspend the city council's of procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances, and adopt ordinance number 16C-02, amending chapter 8.35 of the Mercer Island City Code regarding fireworks regulations. Reasonably recommended that is, as you know, once this is accepted by council, it takes a year for it to actually go into effect, since it is stricter than state law.
Okay, and Counsel, any questions? Jeff?
Yeah, no, I'm supportive of all this, particularly given the survey, which kind of is what tipped me in the direction. But I guess maybe it's not here, but what is happening, what's the enforcement if you were to ban fireworks because it's a drought year? And where's the enforcement mechanism of what is it, what's the consequence of getting caught discharging fireworks? Should this be not a disordment or is that covered in some kind of other code?
If you look at the draft ordinance, exhibit one to your agenda bill, page eight, in section 8.35.030, sub C, it states, "Any person who violates any provision of this section shall be liable for payment of a civil penalty in the amount of $500 for each violation." So in a period of extreme fire danger, if the fire chief were to prohibit the discharge due to drought, then civil infractions in the amount of $500 can be issued for each violation.
So even the prohibition is in section 040, a different section that just covers the whole thing?
Exactly. It's the same enforcement that we have now, it would just apply to discharge in the event of a ban due to drought.
Thank you.
Any further questions from any council members?
I have it covered because I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about this and in part, there's conversation, discussion about it at the mini-planning session, and I think it's important for the public to understand some of the topics that were addressed. So, and fellow council members, bear with me a little bit, but I'd like to, again, establish for the broader community, some of the perhaps perceived interreal changes that are occurring with this particular motion. The first one that I would like to raise is the understanding that while historically it has been island nonprofits that have come forward and restricted and requested permitting for the sale of fireworks, that that is not something that the city council can enforce nor the city in general, that anybody who meets the criteria for the sale of fireworks must be approved, profit or nonprofit, island or not profit, island or non-island.
That is correct.
Okay, great. I'm going to look to anybody else and see if there's any more questions we have going on there. The other point that I would like to call out is that whereas historically we've had one location on the island where fireworks have been sold, that in your estimation there are as many as three locations?
There are approximately about three to five locations.
Three to five locations, depending on the exact number. So, again, whereas we've been historically experiencing one fireworks station from an island nonprofit, there could be up to three to five, depending on the particular conditions of the location.
Correct.
Essentially in the northern. Okay. Great, all right. Well, that ends my questions. Going to look to Counsel. I'm turning to you if there's a motion?
Okay, I move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So ready for the second? Okay, here we go. Adopt ordinance number 16C-02, amending chapter 8.35 M I C C regarding fireworks regulations.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to propose an amendment. I just really, I've already discussed this with the Assistant City Attorney. We have a difference of opinion. But this is on page six of your exhibit one. This is in subparagraph one, I mean, section E, E1. It's just... It's just, third line reads, "If the application is made by a partnership, it shall be signed by each partner of the partnership." I'd like to assert after that, that the following language, that if the application is made by a limited liability company, it shall be signed by a manager or member of the limited liability company, comma, and then proceed along with the rest of the language. And adding that simply because really more businesses are limited liability companies, and this statute is simply written in terms of a partnership or corporation.
Okay, so you referenced that there might be a difference in perspective. Is there a second to that amendment? Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
So, I'm going to look to the city attorneys, see if she has any comments? Assistant city attorney?
Yes.
No problem, go ahead.
Yes, I can address that, and I can explain maybe the rationale why we didn't include LLCs in that language, and that is because there is an LLC statute which allows the LLC and their bylaws to delegate authority the way they see fit. So we thought that adding it, we didn't want to, the city didn't want to legislate the designation of authority by an LLC within our ordinance. That is our rationale behind not including it.
So, any discussions needed?
Yeah, so Mike, I, yeah, I responded to that when I got the rationale, and that rationale also applies for the partnership, because you're designating that each partner sign on behalf of a partnership. You're also designating that corporate officer sign on behalf of a corporation. And just, you know, just again, as I pointed out, the statute says, you know, the default rule for the management of the LLC is members, and if you don't want the default rule, then a manager can be designated to manage affairs on behalf of the LLC. It's, you know, I don't want to spend time arguing the statute, I just think it's something that should be incorporated as reality, because most businesses, many businesses are now LLCs, and we just don't have that addressed here.
I'm going to look to anybody for any further questions.
So is there a way to incorporate language that can include an LLC and a corporation in their authorized designation, designated officer or something? I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so what would make all the lawyers agree with the right text?
I think from my perspective, that adding a reference to LLCs and their authorized representative would be, or their authorized member would be absolutely fine. We can certainly add that change. We weren't trying to be difficult here, frankly, we were just trying not to get into the details about how an LLC chooses to structure itself, when they can be structured to have many, many members, and we didn't want to make it more complicated. So we can simply add, with regard to an LLC, by one of its members, its duly authorized members.
It's not the authority sign.
I had it simply that it would be signed by a manager or a member of the limited liability company. And that will leave it up to the applicant to decide who will be going to designate. I'm happy to have it with, you know, signed by an authorized individual, that's fine.
And we can make that change, council member one, easy, easy to do.
Okay, great. Well, then I think we're ready for a vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See, none remote, amendment passes, and we return to the original amended motion. Is there any discussion? All right, well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the start of the year if I didn't speak up on behalf of those of us who are not proponents of public sale and discharge of fireworks. Again, to the very same point, Jeff, that you indicated that the city survey inclined you to be in support of it, to me, it spoke, interestingly, that there is, I would say, a relative split on the island in terms of the support for either a ban or the continued allowance of the sale and discharge of fireworks, at approximately 42% response of those who oppose it. And to me, that is significant enough that it warrants, in my mind, further discussion, and in particular, that we keep this issue in front of the public on an annual basis. What concerns me about this motion is, yes, I'm all for efficiency and have full confidence in the chief and their staff, yet at the same time, we are one of the only communities that allows the sale and discharge of fireworks by its citizens, and this is something that I think we should seriously question now, before there's any significant damage to individuals in particular, and their homes or private property. In debating this over the last few months, we found out, again, as I would repeat, that it's not just one location, but there are three to five locations on the island, which I think in my mind, should that come forth, it would probably bring a greater prevalence of fireworks. The second piece being, we've heard year on year that the advocacy is very much because the money is spent by the community, and goes to local nonprofit organization or organizations that support this community. We now realize we do not have control over that, and any on-island or off-island for-profit business may sell fireworks on this island insofar as they meet the requirements of the permitting process. So I see that there is some benefit in what we have done tonight. I think it's great that we have created the opportunity for the Fire Chief to put a ban on the discharge on the basis of the increased fire damage. Last year, it was a particular concern. That is a step forward in a world that I'm still not comfortable in, and that the hours that we are selling it are further restricted relative to the state, not allowing on the 5th of July and/or December. So it's only in that context that I'm actually going to be supporting this, but again, I would prefer that this come forward to the community every year to keep us all aware that there are inherent risks and dangers to the sale and discharge of fireworks. And I would like to see at some point Mercer Island joins the majority of communities and disallows them. So with that, all in favor?
Well, I just wanted to be on the record as saying, I hear what you're saying, I'm very supportive of it. As a dog owner of dogs that go bananas during fireworks season, my inclination going into this would be, would have been to join the rest of the communities, but given the survey results and my belief that we should survey in a way that's statistically valid, that there's enough support for it, that because we're doing it as opposed to changing it from not doing it to doing it, and the restrictions not only on the fire, but the times we saw it, getting rid of the 5th of July, getting, you know, stopping running on the 4th, I think on balance, that my inclination, yes, was to be kind of go with, you know, what you would love, I'm going to vote for this.
Okay, any further comment? Sorry for not catching you from the side. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Okay, the next item of regular business is AB 5196, the 2015 year-end surplus disposition. I'm welcoming Finance Director Chip.
Good evening.
I have to let on to tell you one thing, so we've had a lot of second graders in the last couple of weeks, and you get the opportunity to have some students be citizens, some be council members, and some be staff, and they're all very excited when that one person gets to be known as the money man. So, you are known as the money man.
Okay. Good evening. This, just a little history on the disposition of the year-end surplus. This consists of general fund surplus, we have some, and real estate excise tax surplus, which is split 50/50 to a restricted funding capital improvement fund, and is dedicated to capital projects. Just a reminder, there's a five-year stretch, 2009 through 13, I believe, where they had no general fund surplus whatsoever, a little bit of REIT surplus in those years, but no general fund surplus. So it wasn't until 14 that they had any general fund surplus, and you may ask why? It's directly tied to development activity, that has generated significant increases in the construction component of sales tax on the island. So it is with 2015. You'll note that on the bottom of your first page, I'm going to go through this, I'll go into something that, here's the calculation of the surplus. You'll see towards the bottom, the second to the last line, the $95,000, there is that amount left over for 2014 general fund surplus that had been dedicated to the transportation engineer, but hasn't been filled yet. So we took that money and said, let's, we really need it for the surplus, and let's add it to the pot here for total surplus. So it goes from one point to almost 2.1, 2.5 million dollars to 1.34 million dollars for the general fund surplus. The next page contains, and I've broken this tape in two parts, those, this is the council's previously approved, and there's two, and then those which are recommended by staff. So I'm going to assume, what I'm going to do is, on the two previously approved by council, so there's $100,000 for additional funding for I-95 loss and ability negotiations, that was approved by the council back in February of this year, and so I'm assuming that that's, you know, done already, you've actually been spending that money already. The town center parking state, which was approved back in December of last year, was appropriated at 40, almost $43,000. It turns out we didn't need that full amount. Scott was able to give back $10,300, and so now we're showing appropriation of $32,600. So that moves that balance of $10,300 back into this pot of surplus for various uses. Instead of going from top to bottom, I thought we might shake things up and go bottom to top, under staff recommendation. So, we've got to start with a smaller amount of $12,500. I'll just go through each of these and take council questions or concerns as we go through this. You have the ability, well, and just again, to kind of frame this, if you want to, as it's been done in the past, you feel strongly about something, then change the dollar amount, you have that ability, right, to change the dollar amount. I will ultimately come back to the council in September, the first meeting in September, with the second quarter financial status report, with the budget amendment ordinance that would make this, you know, formal and legal.
Yes, can I ask a philosophical question?
Absolutely.
Down into the weeds?
Yes.
So, because I'm going to upend your way back to the top, where you have the $400,000. When you went into this exercise, was your philosophy, what was your philosophy of what we're making the bucket? Because you ended up with a number different than we forecast deficit.
Right.
So there's one view of the world that says, okay, I'm going to set it, I mean, I'm talking like Trip Corner now, I'm going to set aside the full amount of the deficit, and then prioritize things with the rest of the money. You didn't take that philosophical approach?
Yeah, well, I think from a skill, I'm always balancing, actually I have multiple arms, and I'm balancing, I would have preferred to fully fund the projected deficit in '17 from the date of, that was my plan, until a surprise happened, which we'll talk about here shortly, in terms of the Freeman Land and landslide repair. That was not on my radar until fairly recently. And so I keep track of all the various funding needs that are out there, and normally I can fund most of them. And this is one where I made a judgment call, a recommendation call, to sacrifice the projected 2017 deficit, because as I mentioned to you at the mini planning session, I'm hopeful, and that's probably even an understatement, more than hopeful, that when we get to August, and I really nailed down the revenue forecast, in terms of development fees and construction sales tax, not only for this year, but '17 and '18, that those will be a little better than what I showed you even in the planning session a couple Saturdays ago. And so I'm banking on the fact, I'm projecting a surplus this year, 2016, that we can add, if necessary, to the $400,000. So again, if necessary. Okay? Send me come back down to the bottom. The $12,500, as a reminder, and we've been making the council aware of this, we kind of teed this up as part of your CAP kickoff back in March, that one of the big things we'll be asking for, and it was sent two years ago, it was also the six-year CAP, 417, the need for a maintenance management system. The best time, and there's a lot of, it's actually, I would argue, more stressful, more time-intensive and staff-intensive to implement a maintenance management system than a financial system, which is a killer to begin with. You want to pick the best time to do it, and usually an off-budget year is the best time to do it, an odd numbered year. And so in order to hit the ground running, what we want to do is do some professional services work, we need some consultant help, to kind of go through the scoping process, and get an RFP prepared, and get that done this year, get it posted, and get a vendor selected, because the reality is, a lot of these folks, they're already booked, you know, many months in advance, and so we want to be able to hit the ground running as soon as possible in '17. So we're asking for your support. It's a total appropriation of $50,000, a quarter of which would come from the general fund surplus, 75% balance would come from the utility funds, and there's already sufficient appropriation in those funds, because that's really a small amount of money for each of those utilities, that they can handle that increase. Questions on that?
Any questions on this? Okay.
Okay. Next one, moving up, $20,000 for city manager moving expenses, if, depends as we go through this recruitment process, again, during the second half of this year, it's possible it might end up with a candidate who's either coming out of state or not in the immediate future sound region, and they require a move. And so this is a common amount to cover for moving expenses. I don't have it appropriated right now, and so I thought, let's use the surplus to help provide that funding if needed. And if it's not needed, great, then it can be used for another purpose. Moving up to the next one, all my favorites. Reimbursement in the Equipment Mother Fund, that's also signed with the Fleet Fund for all of our vehicles and equipment. That Fleet Fund's really been accounting for this whole soil remediation process we do every year involving our property and the adjacent, our former Honeywell property, and the, what's called a project, it's actually in a deficit position as of the end of 2015. Well, how is that possible? In the Fleet Fund, we have a vehicle reserve balance, we contribute monies for the placement of vehicles, but we don't always spend them in the same year. So we've been temporarily using that as sort of a loan, if you will, to cover those costs. And I come back to the council every year to try to, you know, show that up, and says, to the tune of $38,000 and change, I don't, if we square away the Fleet Fund for this particular project, I don't anticipate having to do that again for a long time.
Jeff, remind me, I thought in this biennial budget, you have money already appropriated for this project?
Yeah, I do, for '15 and '16. This is recognizing the fact that we've incurred costs over the past years, that's been absorbed temporarily by the vehicle reserve balance in this fund. It hasn't been, all the general fund monies that have contributed to this project from way back when, $400,000 was one of them, it's all been spent.
So, do you remember offhand how much you put in the budget for this? My recollection is like $75,000.
Yeah, $80,000, and then we renegotiated the kind of monitoring, took it down to its base minimum level. So for this year, the cost of monitoring would be, I think it's 25, $20,000 or $25,000, we'd get a reimbursement, so it nets out to 15K.
But that point was that if we've got already in the budget something like $75,000 or $80,000, why would you have to, you would seem to have more than enough money to reimburse the equipment fund from what's already in the budget, so why would we have to take surplus money to pay that?
Because a year ago, when I talked to the council about the disposition of the '14 surplus, we needed some record support help, and part of the, the major way I pulled that off in terms of funding it, was to take that $80,000 that was budgeted in '15 and '16, go into the Fleet Fund to cover these costs, and I took it down to just the bare minimum, and took the difference, the $60,000 and change, got dedicated to increasing the legal assistant position to a full, half-time, to a full-time pay illegal, and where, this is confusing, where half of that position is dedicated to doing public records work. It's how we funded the public records function beginning last year.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay. I have a question. I don't understand that, are we going to be budgeting for this Honeywell project?
None of us will be on the city cap.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be retired, unfortunately.
So now, do you want anything amazing and magical to retire that?
Those kind of, yeah, I don't have any brilliant ideas.
Okay, great. Yes, I'm good.
When the thing of the way comes, then everything will change.
Working our way up, the next one is the issue of funding for consultant services related to I-95 loss and ability, again, this is on top of the $100,000 that we've already approved, and this is Kirsten's estimate, so the 75K on top of the $100,000 we've already approved. That's our best guess at this point.
So, and the $100,000 that we approved, is it all spent? Kirsten?
No, we have not spent it yet, but we were anticipating, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare for this one, we're anticipating that we will have spent it this summer, so this extra $75,000 would get us to the end of the year if needed.
And if I understand, is that consulting fees or consulting and legal fees?
It is both.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to my favorite topic, one of the, the disposition of the surplus, it's accounting technical stuff. technical stuff, um, this 93,110 dollars, we have, or the organization has, private and public sector, what's called a compensated absences liability. This is vacation you haven't used yet, comp time you haven't used yet, okay? Uh, if you're working on holidays and stuff, you're going to be compensated for that, but it's primarily vacation. It's a liability, and in the private sector, we get to do what I wish we could do, they get to accrue it, expense it as you go along through the year. Every time you get a paycheck, it gets expensed. I can't do that in a general fund, it drives me crazy, and yet it's still a liability, just like it is in the private sector, it's not, it is an actual liability that's tied to whatever vacation balances of every single employee, okay, times their hourly rate. And so this is how I have to fund it, is I, when I have surplus, I come back to the council, and, and the law calculates what that liability is, as of the end of 15, not this year, the end of last year, and we compare that to the amount I've received in the general fund for this liability, and that difference is the 93,000 dollars and change. So it's a real liability, this is how we've funded it the last few years. Questions? Yeah?
So let's, I mean, I, I already asked Chip a bunch of questions about this during today, so let me, let me just share the information that you already provided, um, to me. So what this is, we have a, just to put this in perspective, at the end of 2012, the balance in this account was about 1,080, the end of 2013, the balance in this account was about 1,090, an increase, there's an increase about 13,000 dollars. Then in 14, the balance in the account was up to 1.159, so an increase of about 68,000 dollars. And then in 2014, in 2015, it's now up to 1,252, so an increase of almost 92,000. So I, at, you can see that there's a, the amount that this is going up every year is starting to, the rate of, the rate of increase is, is becoming significant. What, what Chip explained to me was that a lot of this is due to an increase in total vacation hours that employees have accrued, um, but not take, accrued because they didn't take them, and the way our system is set up, and, is that in 2015, there were an extra 1,161 hours of, of accrued vacation. Um, and the, the other thing Chip explained to me is that, under our policies, a, a, a public safety employee, a fire police, can accrue up to 280 hours, um, and a, a unrepresented employee, or an ask-me employee, can accrue up to 240 hours.
That's correct.
So far I've got that right?
Spot on.
Thank you. So, the, and, and the thing that, then Steve explained to me when I was talking to him is that, one problem of, of vacation accrual, of course, is that if, say, your daily rate in 2015 is, round numbers, 100 dollars, um, if you accrue them and, and you finally get, what, what happens is, if you don't take them, you get cashed out when you leave the city. So if you, if, when you leave the city 10 years later, and your daily rate is now 200 dollars, then those, those 100 dollars are worth effectively twice as much as they were in 2015. So, I, I think, I, and I'm not suggesting we make any decisions on this tonight, but, but as part of the budget process, what I will ask the city manager, whoever's, and finance director, to, to at least present us with is, whether we need to look at the underlying policy that's, that's going on here, because we've got an expense which is increasing, and, and I'm not proposing to take away vacation from any employee, but I, I think we need to at least consider whether we can afford to continue to, to permit this type of accrual. Um, instead, tell employees they gotta take their vacation in the year, in the year that they, they, um, they earn it. And second, whether we need to effectively allow the, the dollar amount to increase year over year because of the fact that salaries go up. So whether you, if, if an hour, if a day's vacation worth 100 dollars in 2015, it should maybe stay worth 100 dollars, so there isn't, this doesn't become a bank account, basically, which, which, which accrues interest at five, six percent a year, whatever wages are going up. So that's, yeah, I'm, I'm not objecting to this tonight, but I think, I think seeing this again for the 17th time, and recognizing the, the rate of increase we're dealing with here, I, I do hope the council would support the idea of at least doing maybe a further dive into this as part of the budget process, so we can maybe consider asking for a change in policies to address this going forward.
Just to provide some perspective, uh, what we have in terms of our, uh, vacation balance limits is really typical, it's not, uh, this is common throughout all the cities, there are cities that even have higher limits, but what we have, 240 hours for all of our non-public safety employees is typical, and public safety 280. The challenge we have is ideally, you'd like to make those limits lower, right, to get them to use it. When you're lean, and you have turnover, you have a lot on your work plan, um, people struggle to take their lot of vacation, because when you take it, uh, many of us, I look at Kerry, actually work on our vacations, and when you come back, you're trying to avoid coming back to this huge, you know, this mountain of work, and so, we're second to walk in a hard place, uh, honestly, and, uh, I understand the concern about financially, but it goes beyond that, it goes beyond, in terms of, I use, it's a red flag when staff aren't using all of their vacation or most of it, and I hope the council would view it similarly from an employee health perspective.
And, and I agree, Chip, I mean, but it may be that that does require us to tell employees to use their vacation, and, because it's a red flag from a personnel standpoint, it's also becoming an increasing red flag from a financial standpoint, that we can't, we can't continue to go over this type of rate of increase, which is like a, it's going up 20, 30 percent a year, in terms of comparison to the preceding year, in terms of how much this is increasing, so. But, and again, I, my intention was not, I just raised the point, I'm not gonna oppose what you're doing here, I'm just saying that it forces us to, to, to just not assume that we can just click this off every year and, and absorb these kinds of increases year after year.
Yeah, they're not 20 percent though, they're, they're not 20 percent increases.
They're not 20 percent delta between from year to year, they're, you know, from, from 2000, the increase in-
Look at it multiple years.
No, the increase in 2014 was, was, uh, 67,000 dollars, the increase this year is 93,000, so that's a 50 percent increase.
Well, yeah, I, the base-
I think, I think we're discussing them all, and I think, you know, everybody's points are being taken here, um, but to go back to that organizational health question, which is, I think, one we all need to be very conscious of, when you look at the accrual of the hours, one of the questions for me would be, is it at a particular level? Is it in a particular department where we find it disproportionately being banked? Because to me, that then becomes a symptom of an, as you call out, potential other underlying issues, that as we go forward, we need to understand, because it's not only important to get the work done, but it's also important that the employees here are feeling happy, and sufficiently rested, and compensated, and with that mindset, able to give the best service to the public. So, I, I appreciate there's concern, the math, I get it, but I would say, let's try to understand a little bit more if there isn't some underlying question, is there something in the police department, is there something in the, um, public works department, I, I don't know where, but if we're seeing that this is disproportionately located somewhere in the organization, I, I think that our leadership and the city manager would want to know, and then bring that to our attention with any recommendations.
Does the general counsel interest in bringing this topic up, going into budget process?
I wouldn't advocate super science, I mean, I'm not talking hours and hours, but I think, you know, if you could even just start a, I'll look to Chris and have her figure it out, rather than me try to be an HR specialist at this point.
Okay, we'll take a look.
And then maybe do a deeper dive at our next retreat?
No, it should be during the budget process, that's when you need to set the policies.
Hmm. Okay. So I think there's, there's definitely counsel interest in understanding, I think more at, at the right level, kind of, wouldn't want the city manager to take this as guidance to conduct an organizational-wide deep, deep dive into the vacation accrual practices.
See, everything we decide to agree on tonight, the city manager has to do, it still falls on your neck, right?
I'm making my list for-
He's writing very clearly, thanks. Okay, thanks Chip.
Move us up to the next one, uh, the 100,000 dollar request, additional funding for the fire station 92 construction project. As the council's been briefed in the past, we need to spend some money, we are in the process of spending money to finish the roof, um, I'm estimating right about 100,000 dollars over kind of the approval budget. The good news is, is the expectation is that 100,000 dollars over budget, if at the full cost, the full amount of money we're spending on the roof, we expect to be reimbursed, and, uh, and so that actually goes beyond 100,000 dollars. So this is a temporary funding to, to give us the money to complete these expenditures, and then we'll be seeking reimbursement, uh, through the appropriate channels.
So, Chip, why, it's a temporary, why would you take it out of the general fund? Why wouldn't you take it out of, is that what you normally would do?
Uh, because I needed, again, balancing, right, uh, I got other needs, uh, I could have looked at meat surplus, that would have been an option.
Couldn't you take it out of the equipment fund? Don't you think you've got money there?
Uh, that's for vehicles, that's not for the fire station.
Vehicles underneath it.
This is my best source. Can I just ask, this might be a question for the city attorney, and I know you can't predict necessarily, but, um, do you have any idea as far as reimbursement, uh, obviously we can't guarantee we'll get reimbursed, but obviously we're advancing the funds, so I'm just kind of curious, time-wise, when we might be able to see something.
Well, the settlement agreement that the council approved, um, called for us to follow up with a, um, cross-claim against the general contractor for the Fire Station 92 Project Corp. Incorporated, and we have filed a breach of contract and breach of warranty claim, um, and based on a case schedule order, you know, it could take a year before we get that resolved, we're hoping it's much sooner than that, um, but we are, as Chip said, anticipating reimbursement, and we are taking all the, all the steps contemplated in the settlement agreement to, um, achieve that reimbursement, but the courts, um, do take some time in the, on the civil side, it's not like what you see on TV and the movies, so we have to be somewhat patient.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we, the next one? Council chambers audiovisual equipment, 180,000 dollars. Uh, this is, you know, everything except your sound system, basically, and, uh, it needs to be replaced, you, I think you've all heard the various complaints we hear from folks, we're definitely not state-of-the-art, and it's, we're past the useful life of the equipment by, I forget how many years. And so the recommendation is, this is how, one way I can make the fund is using general fund surplus, and we've already had a cost of out, it's 180,000 dollars, including tax.
Any questions on this one?
Do you have any, Chip?
No, go ahead.
So, is there any chance of getting a contribution from the school district for this?
That, thank you for asking that, I'd forgotten that little tidbit, I put together something for Steve, who I believe forwarded to Gary on a recommended split, came up with a basis, an allocation based on hours spent here, along with the videographer, and came up with a percentage split.
Yeah, and, and I have, uh, had a prouret communication with Dr. Plano, we are meeting, I believe it's, um, a week from either Wednesday or Thursday, and this is one of the topics we'll be discussing. And, and he's been receptive.
Can you tell us what the recommended?
I'm trying to remember, was it a two-thirds, one-third split, or three-quarters, one-quarter?
Thirty percent, seventy percent.
It was thirty, seventy, we had, we had.
And it was based on, um, analysis largely done by Allie with regard to the number of hours and the types of use the system gets by all of our users, as well as the, the district.
Over the last few years, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that the goal is to have that money, uh, whatever money comes from the district, to, to go into the pot for, um, you know, the saving pot for replacing these items, because we don't have, we don't have a replacement fund for the council chamber equipment, so, there might be some, at some point, that could help cover, but I think the point is for ongoing from, from here on out with it.
So wouldn't go towards the 108, I'm sorry.
Actually, it, that's, that's, there's two options, there's what Allie just mentioned, or there's the option where we split the 108, 70 percent, 30 percent, and in terms of future replacement, that becomes a, typically when you negotiate with a Comcast, right, and, uh, we arrange for some kind of contributions for the replacement of this equipment if it's been of the useful life.
Right, presumably that, if they should be contributing, if, if they were presenting to come out of the equipment fund, then they should jointly be contributing to that to cover future, if, if you add that to your replacement schedule.
Uh, this, they'd be in the school district?
Yeah.
Ideally, yes.
Okay, great.
Wendy, as a Wendy-
I'm just curious how soon this can get done.
I don't recall. Uh, I, I would recall-
The actual work, great.
Still can?
Go ahead.
I don't know, um, the company that we contract with is a busy company, um, but we would get on their schedule and, and get it done as soon as we can. I, I think there's, you know, a lot of the equipment that's in the room downstairs would be stuff that, you know, Mike will be able to purchase and get here, it's them getting it all installed, so I really don't know, I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I may be able to get a, a better idea from my case or tomorrow, and, and if I'm able to do that, I can, I can put that in my bi-weekly report to council.
Great. Jeff?
Well, I was just wondering, eight, well, two different things, one, maybe I was dreaming that this equipment could be donated from some nice person, or B, did you look at lease versus buy, and usually things if they go out of date, are things you want to lease, and then be able to upgrade to new stuff over time, and I don't know whether there'll be any cheaper, you know, lifecycle costs to lease.
Uh, for this kind of equipment, I do leasing on fire trucks, so there's purchase agreement on this stuff, I haven't looked at lease financing, it would surprise me if it would make sense.
Well, it's like, I'm thinking, I mean, when a video, maybe I'm going in the wrong place, but like, in the cable stuff you have at your house, you can buy the cable box, or you can pay monthly for your cable box, so I'm not even talking about lease financing separate, but from the, whoever's providing it to you, I know doctors' offices, or dermatologists' offices will take equipment that they know is gonna have new generations, and, you know, sort of lease them instead of buying them outright. So, I don't know if that, you know, I'll take a realistic option.
Okay. One of the questions I had is, in the, in the current system that we have, are we incurring hourly costs from individual individuals who have to come here and turn on switches and flip off switches? Is there even be some ease of maintenance whereby we wouldn't perhaps then need to have those same, you know, hourly costs? You need to have a videographer here, okay, running the cameras, running all the equipment, you have to have a person doing it.
You have to go down there?
Depends on the council.
He's bored of nothing.
Okay, any more questions on this one? One, the obvious, they all have great interest in getting fixed, okay?
Okay, and, and when we get that kind of, uh, agreement with the school district on the split, uh, you know, that would potentially free up 30 percent of that number, right, for something else. I'll come back, I'll know that come, when we come back to the council, in the second quarter report in September, and we can decide this disposition, and we can decide this disposition at that point in time.
Okay.
The last two items, the expensive ones, the Freeman Land and Landslide Repair, at almost 362,000 dollars, this represents the balance in general fund surplus. Um, this, again, this, this is located at the, um, western end of Southeast 40th Street, all the way past West Mercer Way, and, uh, the preliminary, very preliminary estimate is 550,000 dollars, and, uh, this is a complicated thing, and there's adjacent property owners that are impacted, um, and in terms of a funding source, that there's, there's an urgency to kind of risk it this thing fixed, and concerned about future landslide when the wet weather comes again. And I'm trying to put together some funding for this, there's, there's still discussions about, to what extent should, uh, property owners participate in this, uh, that stuff that can be, uh, addressed at a future point in time, but it certainly, you know, this would be part of the package, is in all fairness, uh, they say, you know, we may be fronted initially, but seek reimbursement- initially, but seek reimbursement in relatively near future. What if, in terms of additional funding sources on the city side, I focus mostly on general fund surplus. Another potential surplus is REIT surplus, though I'm recommending in the next third page of the agenda bill to spend that differently. Though there is, it looks like there's going to be surplus this year as well. I'm not really willing to bank on it just yet. This stormwater fund, since the landslide, there's a connection between stormwater management, a lack thereof, or mismanagement on that, not by the city, on that property, where potentially the stormwater fund could front some of that cost as well. One could argue that the sewer fund could contribute a portion because we have some property sewer pumps and whatnot that could provide some initial funding. So we have multiple funding sources to kind of cobble together the necessary funding to get it done. It's, the really difficult work is the negotiation that follows in terms of how to allocate those costs amongst multiple parties. And if the council is interested in not appropriating this format, leaving a lesser amount, we're estimating the design, because this is complicated stuff. And the reason it's so expensive is you need soldier piles to shore up the slope. It's really steep slope. And soldier piles are expensive, there's no way around it. And so if you're adjusting this funding initially, the design work, that's estimated $150,000 to do some design work, some survey work, and really just nail down lots of details, that would be totally appropriate as well.
Any questions on this topic?
Well, I think that, as you point out, there are a ton of open issues that staff is still trying to address. And committing this much money without knowing how those issues work out is, in particular, discussions with the other property owners. I mean, it's problematic, although I appreciate the need for, for at least doing some initial design work. So, I mean, I, as I understand it, the staff is looking for $150,000 to cover design and on some sort of contract which would be terminable at any point by the city, in which case we would only pay for services performed. So I, hopefully, the council would see it appropriate to reduce this to $150,000 for terminable design services.
And the advantage of that, of course, is that allows us to go into the design, then come back to the council and we have, because there is a lot of unanswered questions that this work will help answer. And then there's some additional work on the part of staff, and then come back to the council and provide more information at that point and appropriate, if necessary, additional funding.
And there would be additional funding available to appropriate at that point?
Yes, what we would do is we wouldn't spend the $461,598, just the $150, appropriate that up to, you know, as Dan just mentioned. And then reserve, if you will, just not decide on the disposition of the balance until later.
That's right, okay.
Is your general agreement of the council, take it down to $150,000?
Well, I think what we have, with the stipulation of questions, we haven't been voting thumbs up and thumbs down on any of these at the end, so I think at the end of this conversation, we wouldn't have to...
There's no motion on this thing. This is all, this is just really a thumbs up, thumbs down agenda bill.
But we haven't been doing thumbs up and thumbs down. So the question is, does the council feel like there has been sufficient agreement thus far on each of these items per se? Or do we need to revisit and go back with the thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay. So then let's stop here on the Freeman Landing. Is the, the rule of the council then $150,000 and terminable with the remaining amount held over pending further discussion and engineering work?
Again, for just for design and...
For design, design only? Okay, so that's thumbs up. Okay, good.
And then lastly, $400,000 to bridge the projected, it's preliminary projection of the 2017 deficits in the general fund and the YFS fund. At the mini planning session, the combined deficit, I showed the council $712,000 for '17. I do think that will come down. I just, I'm not in a position to make that call until August. And so I'm simply saying, I think the smart thing to do is to set aside $400,000. It may turn out that that's enough. It wouldn't surprise me if the combined deficit swung a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'm not willing to bank on it just yet. But let's, let's do a good healthy down payment on that deficit of $400,000 now. And then if we need more as we go through '16, have a better sense of development activity going into the second half of this year and into '17 with the more torn and ten cent now, you know, over as of today, right? And also in being a better position, I just lost the train, I thought. Oh, just in terms of reforecasting revenues for 2017 and have a better sense of, do we need a balance or not?
Any questions?
Great question. So one, but one, if, I mean, thumbs up taking the 361 down to 150, does the other 210 for now go into this? Or do they just sit, just in the vapor space, in the cloud, as we say in the technology business? Okay.
It is answer, to be addressed at a later point in time, most likely September. Okay, so I'll take that input from the council and we'll bring it back a later point in time in September as part of the seventh quarter financial session report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, super. Okay, next, I refer you to businesses AD 5189 DSG Development and Construction Permit Fees Update, and you're welcome.
Chip, you didn't do the street fund.
Did you, yeah, Chip, was, did you need thumbs up, thumbs down on the remainder items of the, the street fund and the capital improvement fund? I just kind of thought, oh, that was just...
Actually, we need to go back to bread.
Yes!
Yes, I forgot about page three of your agenda bill.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're not done with that agenda bill.
Mercy. Okay, this is the REIT disposition. I should mention, the one thing I was not able to fund is our contingency fund, that's our rainy day reserve target. It's 10% of budget of general fund expenditures. I try to keep that, I do what's called a one-year lag and where I would try to fund it at its target level based on 2015 budget, even though we leave my 116. And I just ran out of funding. And so it needs another $157,000 in round numbers. What I'm proposing is we'll revisit this as part of the 2016 surplus discussion a year from now. That's just the best I can do. And I'm okay with that. It's not ideal. And I should mention, just, you know, this has been a topic of conversation with the council, you know, what's the, do we have too much, too little? Most cities, and they, those cities calculate their rainy day fund or their contingency fund differently, but generally speaking, we're at the absolute minimum in terms of 10%. Most cities do 12 to 15%. A few go up to 20%. I would never recommend that. I personally would prefer to be at 12%, but 10% is absolute minimum. And to be fair, we have another $300,000 sitting in the general fund, which is an extension of the contingency fund. That gets us to about 11%. But because we're lagging, we're closer to around about 10% overall. Okay?
I'm sorry, where's that $300,000 for the general fund?
This is, it's been called the revenue stabilization reserve.
Okay.
Okay, and so if you have, it was set up many years ago, before my time, for if you have a downturn in a sales tax, for example, okay, an economically sensitive revenue source, that can plug it temporarily. So, the balance of the surplus, excuse me, is the REIT, which again is split 50/50 between the street fund and the capital improvement fund. We're recommending in the street fund, the surplus is $100, almost $33,000 for 2015. And we mentioned this to the council back at your CIP kickoff in March. What we'd like to do is use this and transfer that balance, that surplus, to the capital improvement fund for the Allen Crest Park South Field Improvements Project. Now, ideally, the way this is supposed to be set up, we're going to talk about the CIP preview tonight. Because the council was so packed, we decided let's make for, let's not go to midnight again. So we pushed the CIP preview to July 5th. So we're a little out of sync here. It could be that you want to hold off on that decision until July 5th, and that's okay. But this is what the staff is recommending, is use it for that purpose. That project needs that funding.
Question. One of my recollections regarding that particular project was, we were also very interested in the status of the public fundraising as well. Do you have any update on that?
I don't have an update on that.
Okay.
And then the capital improvement fund, just simply keep, per best practice, keeping the surplus in the capital improvement fund. I've already used it, you see, like, on July 5th, but we've folded that into how to balance the six-year COP if I needed it. So, direction from the council, questions, comments on the REIT disposition? Do you want to hold off on the street fund disposition until July 5th? Are you comfortable with that recommendation?
I would actually like to hold off.
Okay, can I see the big picture of the host? That's what I figured. Okay. Now I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm welcome back.
Good evening. For the record, Kirsten Taylor, your Assistant City Manager. In May, we had FCS Group come and present the DSG Fee Study or Fee Analysis Cost Recovery Study. And at that time, council gave direction that we would increase the target cost recovery levels for planning services and engineering services from 60 to 80%. That we would increase fees to meet these cost recovery levels. And we would establish new fees for selected services that are currently provided without a fee. And that we would update the development fees with the effective date of August 1st, 2016. So I'm back to present the details of that, the direction. Also with me this evening is Development Services Director Scott Greenberg, and we will probably tag him on any questions that you have, since he is the expert on some of these permit services. So a few of the fee changes, we've adjusted, the adjusted fees now more accurately reflect the level of effort to process permits. We did not increase every fee. Some fees are increased, a few, three are decreased, because when we looked at one area of fees, we felt it was only fair to fully look at those fees, such as for a design review, and to make any adjustments to really be fair with our, our fee changes. So the new fees in planning, we've added administrative design review of development signs. It is something that we had to do. So when developments are going in, they have development signs going up, we have to review those to make sure that they are the correct size, that they meet some basic requirements. We've been doing that without applying a fee. So we now have a fee for that. We also have wireless...
Is that commercial and residential or just, it's commercial and commercial? Okay.
We also have wireless communications facilities. There is a 6409 exemption, which Scott would have to answer questions about, if you have questions about that. In the agenda bill, we originally proposed a fee that was, that ultimately was higher than, when we, we're looking at the fees after publishing the agenda bill. We just were doing a further review, preparing for a presentation, and we were uncomfortable. We felt that we had added too many hours for the actual work that was required for this fee. Because since it is a new fee, we don't have any experience or history of processing this permit. So I think we originally had estimated too many hours for the actual work that it's going to require. So we do want to propose changing that to $1,494. And then we've also added a new wireless communications facility fee that we did not previously have. Some other changes of fees that already existed in planning, the design review major, the fees were increased, the design review minor, two of the fees were increased and three were decreased. We really felt that with those minor design reviews, it does not go to the design commission, that we were estimating those fees to, that they were too high. So we decided to make that adjustment, to propose that adjustment. And then with the subdivisions, we had for long plaid, long subdivisions, we had fees, so kind of leftover from changing, probably from short plats, looking at short plats, we had individual fees for two or three lots, four lots, six lots. What we have determined in this community, if it's a long plaid, if it meets those criteria, the amount of effort is similar, whether it's four lots or 10 lots or 18 lots. So we have changed to one fee and increased it to more accurately reflect the amount of staff effort that is taken to process those fees. We also have a noise variance that was previously a noise variance and now it's a noise exception with types one, two, and three. And this is something that is already in place, but we have not changed the fee to reflect this. In engineering, the engineering fees reflected the areas of lowest cost recovery from the study. We were, we were recovering less than 30% on our engineering fees. So we definitely look at changing most of those fees. So the engineering review and inspection, whether it's stormwater or site development or any of those engineering, where we have our development review engineer, our city engineer involved during the review, those hourly rates have increased. We also found that our inspections were low on cost recovery. So our water service permit and site sewer permits also went up. It's not a lot of money, but there are a lot of those permits. So we think that these will help us get to our, our new cost recovery goals. We also have the tree removal restoration. We had been talking for a while that currently we have tree removal for one tree or one to nine or 10 grader trees. And we felt that there was a middle grade that really reflected a different level of work. Right now, if there's somebody removing a single tree or one or two trees, that is one level of work. Somebody might have a hazardous tree or, you know, some single tree that needs to come down. It doesn't have the same effect in the neighborhood. We don't get the same amount of calls. But we do have the experience that having between the four and 10 trees, there is an increased level of work. And then if there's greater than 10 trees, of course, there's, there's even more work. So those fees have increased. And yes, so all other fees have increased to more accurately reflect the actual time spent. The other changes that we've made, we found some squirmers errors that we have corrected in, in the documents. So we just have made some of those changes, nothing else is substantive, just correcting some errors. And that is it? So if there's any questions, Scott and I would be happy to take your questions. Cancel any questions?
I'm just curious, thank you very much, Emily. It's, it's great that we're trying to recover as much cost as possible. How far these costs can be reviewed? Is it, is it at a year or...
The council direction was, they did not want to give us direction on the frequency of doing future fee studies. So while we, we did get direction that we would come back with a fee study in the 17, '18 budget, that was the direction that, that we received and we would just have to bring back to council in the future for a few years, I've had another proposal.
I have a question. If you hold the type of permits steady, or the type of fees steady, and you aggregate them all, if you were to do the same number in, well, starting August 1st, running through July 30th, what would be the average percentage increase in fees?
1st, running through July 30th, what would be the average percentage increase in fees?
For, in aggregate? What we had done, I, I don't know that, what we had done was, we looked at, at what we were projecting, the number of permits and the fee increases, and we got to under $200,000 a year in fees. The direction was to work at recovering $160,000 a year on average. If we are estimating the number of permits, we might come in a little higher than that, because we know that, that we can't guess quite right. I mean, we can get close, but, but some permits might be, we might have more of them, some permit types we might have less, but we're about $180,000 is what we're expecting a year, and the permit revenues are budgeted to be about 2.1 million for 2016. Although, I will say, we were looking at the numbers, and we are, at the end of April, we are already almost at 50% of revenues already because of the activity, and it's because it's a very high activity year, but we cannot count on having that level of activity.
Yes, I think the question was, if you were just to, you know, extrapolate for July, what you have for June, or what you have for May, and you were to hold the, the numbers, the distribution exactly the same, and the only thing you were applying were the rate increases, so you were not adding the new fees in there, I'm just looking for what would be the approximate average increase that, that a...
I'm going off memory, but when you take $160,000, a little bit more, and the, the permit revenue is closer to 3 million, I believe, and change, it's about 5%.
Okay.
It's under 6%, at least 5%.
Okay.
Overall.
Yeah, just, you know, order language, all right, great. Council, any questions, any more questions?
I'm just curious how these fees and hourly rates compare to other cities locally? Are we kind of on par, are we over the top, being a small city? Like, what's kind of the ballpark?
It's, it's a hard question to compare apples to apples, because if you have a development project, any city will have a combination of permits for that development project. If you look at the, the cost for the subdivision, for the site development permit, for design review, if that's required, you would, you would have to add up all of the permits that were involved, so you can look at one permit, and we might be high, we might be low, we might be in the middle. You would have to really understand all the permits in aggregate that, that a city would require for a project, and so it is, it's hard to compare. FCS Group will give us numbers and say, well, if you look just at this permit, here's where you are. We're typically not the highest in the area at all, but again, it's really hard to compare, which is why we have to look at, what are the number of hours that we take to process a permit in this community?
So, in general, when somebody pays a fee, how, how do they know how many hours might come after that, or is that totally project?
We don't, we don't have, some cities have a, you pay a deposit, and it's good for 20 hours of work, and then you have to pay by the hour above that. We just have a project fee for most services, and some of the engineering is by, is by the hour that we have, but most of our work is based on just a, an average fee for how long an average permit takes to process.
Okay. Okay. Council, any questions, and returning the motion?
I knew that we adopted Resolution Number 1516, adopted redevelopment and construction permit fees, I'm sorry, permit fees, effective August 1, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment, any discussion? Okay, see, none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? There is none, passes. Great, with that concludes the agenda bill portion of the, the meeting, so we will now move on to other business. Councilmember absences, is there a motion to excuse Mayor Bassett?
We would like to excuse Mayor Bassett.
All in favor? Do I need a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and we need a motion to excuse Councilmember Liz Entire.
Can I show everyone the picture?
All in favor? Opposed? No, okay. All right, planning schedules, so, City Manager, I guess you would like to talk to us about the work we're going to do after we're gone?
Ah, yes, we have some interesting things coming up on your agenda, the in the packet is an updated version of the City Council planning schedule. I would just point out a couple of updates from the last time you saw this. First of all, we have for July 5th, your next meeting indicated that that is the ending of the continued public hearing on the TIP, that will be the, the formal conclusion of that hearing. We have also the moved adoption of the 2017-22 Transportation Improvement Program to the July 19th date, in order to make sure that anything that comes in that might be new on the public hearing, that staff has an opportunity to, to respond to prior to asking you to take final action. We have been continuing to get input, just like you had tonight, and we're trying to make sure that all of that written input and, and the verbal input that we receive is incorporated into the updated agenda bill and responded to, so you have the information in mind, which will base your decisions. And as Chip mentioned earlier, we did move from originally scheduled for this evening to July 5th, the preview of preliminary 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Program, and we moved that simply to try to even out the meetings, because tonight's meeting had so many agenda items, and July 5th, there weren't very many, and that brings me to the third item on that agenda, was the school bus camera IOA and ordinance, if it required second order, but it will not, so that will not be on that agenda either. And beyond that, I'll pass all of this information on to Ms. Bissonette.
Great. Councilmembers, any questions? Any upcoming absences that we haven't captured yet?
Steve, I was curious, where do we stand for the vacancies in DSG, do you know?
Yes, the advertisement for the positions, the formal advertisement for the position went out last week, and we have, it's an open and total filled, but with an initial review date of...
Next Monday.
Next Monday, so we will take a look at whatever we receive by that time, we're also reaching out to some folks who we think could potentially be interested, so we're trying to move as quickly as possible on that. The other thing that Scott and I have talked about is making sure that we get information out to both the community in general and our development community with regard to the situation we're in right now, and hopefully, asking for a little bit of patience, we probably won't be able to meet our standard turnaround times for, for a short while, so, that's the situation.
Any other questions? Okay, councilmember reports, we'll start with Benson.
I just wanted to report, I'm sure I did this last meeting, but we ran kind of late. So, at the end of May, the Community Advisory Board met, and just wanted to let the council know that another community forum is being planned probably for September or October of this year, and so, this forum, City is working on with staff and with the other board members on another topic of how to make Rosalina have a healthier place for youth, so that's something that hopefully, folks at the council can be engaged in, and more information will be forthcoming. And just also, I want to mention that on June 9th, I attended the P S R C Transportation Policy Board, and there was a presentation, I think, they're probably going to make this presentation at the S E Pick as well, but they, they had this fascinating presentation on travel trends, and they're looking at how people, where people are moving in around this area, and obviously, it's tied to jobs and growth and what have you, but it's a fascinating amount of data that they've been able to compile, and if you have a chance to look at this travel trend presentation, I certainly encourage you to do that. If I'm able to get some PowerPoint information, I'll forward it on, but it's just really interesting. That's it.
Dan, Wendy, sorry, Jeff?
Well, just a reminder to everybody, the library is scheduled to reopen Saturday, July 23rd, so they're on, on schedule for as far as the latest, and come and have a good time.
Wendy.
Shout out to our staff, who together this summer celebrate here.
July nights should be on everyone's calendars, very cool brochure. Great, super.
Last day of the development moratorium.
Yeah, I think we should, I think that's last day of development moratorium, and we hope that, that Scott and team have gotten some good rest, at least from a town center perspective. Well, I mean, from a permitting of town center, it's clearly been a, a busy couple of years. I did pass every board appointment, there are none, so, just calling that out. And with that, the rest of the meeting is now adjourned, and we are before 9:30. Congratulations, Steve. And now, now we can begin the...